First item of business is to ascertain a quorum, Mr. Metters.
Present.
Mr. Shell.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Nacastro.
Present.
And the Chair is present as well. We have public announcements and agenda item requests, the next item. We have one announcement we want to get right out of the way. Jill wants to introduce our new DPW Director, Mr. Rob Failey. Rob, please come up to the microphone if you would and show that great visage to everybody out there in TV land.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very excited to introduce our new Department Head, who's our new Director of Public Works, Rob Failey, and it's so nice to see him in person. He's been monitoring our meetings even when he was applying for the position, so he's ready to go. So, Rob's first day was yesterday, March 13th, and he and his family have been vacationing on Lower Cape for many years and well aware of our special quality of life. He will soon be joined by his wife and 14-year-old daughter, as well as his three-year-old golden retriever. Rob holds a Bachelor's Degree in Sustainable Business Management from Unity College and Associate's Degree in Architecture from the State University of New York at Delhi. Since 2001 and more recently, Rob has served as a Regional Administrator for the State of Vermont Agency of Transportation. He oversaw a team of 145 employees, the maintenance of 1,300 miles of highways, 400 bridges over the southern third of the state, including 20 garages and office facilities. His team also provided technical assistance to 92 towns. Rob was responsible for developing an annual budget of $225 million and accountable to meet budget and performance goals. In this role, Rob also served as the Incident Commander during several major winter storm and flooding events. Rob also served as the Agency Liaison for two unorganized towns and represented the agency on several boards and committees, including County Transportation Advisory Councils, Technical Council on Art Installations, and the Vermont Asset Management Information System, among many others. Rob's career with the State of Vermont Agency of Transportation provided opportunities to serve as a project supervisor, working on the Bennington Bypass, Vermont Route 279, a 101,000 mile limited access highway, and as a project manager with the Maintenance Division, District One, where he served as a technical advisor to the district workforce and provided safety and engineering services to support construction projects while -- construction products, including paving, stormwater, and bridge work. Prior to moving to Vermont, Rob was an engineer for the Putnam County, New York Department of Highways and Facilities. His responsibilities included surveying, design, drafting, field layout, estimating, and construction supervision. He was also responsible for overseeing stormwater and sewer installations and building renovations. Of note was his work as lead on the design of the first residential-type dwelling for homeless veterans in New York State. Rob is originally from Carmel, New York. He has dedicated not only his career to public service, but also volunteered to serve on the Sunderland, Vermont Town Zoning Board of Appeals and the Town's Recreation and Parks Committee. Additionally, he volunteers on his church's building committee and enjoys spending time with his family, golfing, skiing, the ocean, and all things outdoors. Welcome, Rob.
Thank you.
Rob, please.
If there's anything more to say.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Select Board members. It's truly an honor for me to be here. Like Jill said, I've been coming to the Cape for many, many years and just thrilled to be a part of the Chatham team, and I look forward to supporting the residents of Chatham and supporting the Select Board's goals and objectives. So, thank you.
So far, so good, Rob. Sounds great. Welcome aboard, honestly, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, welcome. Okay, there's one public announcement. Are there other public announcements either here or virtually? And I know I have one agenda item request coming forward from a Select Board member. I see no hands raised virtually. An agenda item request, Ms. Davis.
Thank you. I just want to let Mr. Nacastro know I did some homework. As the housing crisis continues to worsen, it's becoming increasingly difficult for the missing middle to find affordable housing. So, and to become aware of these issues, some of us have heard presentations on what other committees have been doing to find solutions to create more year-round housing options for that missing middle. We've heard from folks in Colorado about the Vail Indeed Program. So, and we've also heard from our Community Housing Sustainability Director, who has introduced the concept of year-round occupancy deed restriction programs as a potential program for Chatham. Last week, the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association heard from Province Town Select Board Member Leslie Sandberg. In thinking the Vail Indeed Program was a good tool, Leslie and other Cape cohorts, mostly from Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket, started a conversation about legislation. Town Council for Nantucket and Province Town drafted legislation that Senator Seer has agreed to support. It's an act relevant to year-round housing occupancy, and it's known as SD 1040. The legislation would add a year-round housing occupancy restriction category to Mass. General Law 184, Sections 26, 31, and 32. Section 26 outlines restrictions that run with the use of land such as conservation and agriculture. SD 1040 adds language to add housing occupancy to that list. Section 31 provides the definition of the restrictions that are related to the definition. SD 1040 would add year-round deed restrictions as one of those defined. Section 32 focuses on the effect, enforcement, acquisition, and the release of restrictions, and SD 1040 would provide language to fulfill the provisions of that section. That is the extent of the legislation, and it codifies the abilities for towns to have the authority to pursue year-round housing deed restrictions without AMI restriction. It also gives us the town the ability to create our own year-round housing, year-round deed housing occupancy restriction program in a way that makes sense for us. So, this is just creating the opportunity, such as a conservation restriction. So, this is going to be another tool in our toolbox. I would like an agenda item to discuss supporting the legislation with a letter and to move forward with developing a program and a Home Rule Act petition that suits our particular need. I believe that this legislation has the potential to not only provide much-needed affordable housing, but to strengthen our town. And just to note, the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association unanimously supported the legislation and are sending a letter as well.
Okay, thank you, Shereen. Sounds very interesting. Thank you. Any other agenda item requests? Anybody online in or here? I see none. I see none. Mr. Bohanna, no? Okay, so onward and upward here, we have kind of an extensive business agenda this evening. Are there any public comments on that business agenda? I do see Mr. Oppenheim's hand being raised. Mr. Oppenheim, and I will go through the litany of items that we have after Mr. Oppenheim speaks.
David Oppenheim, I'll be very brief. I know you're taking up, I think, 193, the existing senior center and repurposing that and putting that on the agenda. I believe there's support on the board for that item. I just wanted to comment, since this has come and been public, I was getting a lot of responses from people, very positive for the most part. Some people still question the cost of the senior center, and that will continue, and I think that will hopefully become easier to explain. And some people are starting to understand the benefits of the companion article to repurpose and the economic benefits of that. I think one of the things that's important is for this board, Finance Committee, and anybody doing this, is to keep the articles together as one topic because they go hand in hand, which is why I think we call them companion articles. And obviously, the repurposing of 193 is contingent upon the approval of the senior center. And everybody's talking about affordable, attainable workforce, et cetera, but by getting both of these articles passed, you're accomplishing two things. We're putting to bed or finalizing something that's been on the agenda for years and years, which is to get the seniors a better facility to serve the demographic, the senior demographic in this community, provide better services, enhance services. The housing part services the entire community. Everybody's talking about it's just for the young people. It's not just for the young people. Housing is a crisis in this town for all age groups, certainly for young families, working families, seasonal employees, but there are also a lot of elderly people in this town that would like to have smaller places to live, maybe sell their homes so they have enough money to stay in place, but there's no place to rent. There's not a place to get. So, I think we have to understand, and it needs to be talked about and in the forefront of the conversation, that the housing portion of these two articles combined is not just for young people, it's for the entire demographic of the community, it serves the whole community. It's something that we'll be able to see and learn from because if, assuming we're successful at town meeting with the senior center and the 193 article, we're going to be able, while the other buildings being built, we're going to have time to really understand how something can be repurposed appropriately, and it may be very helpful as we go forward in acquiring other properties or dealing with other properties to see what level of flexibility. That, I think, 193 provides the option for accessible housing on the first floor. There's so many options there. So, I don't want to lose sight and have it become about one group or another group. We are certainly going to service the seniors by getting them an appropriate place to do their work, but the housing portion of this is for everybody. It's for the entire community, the health of all age groups, and I just, I want to make that comment, and I know you're going to support this, and I feel very good about -- the response has been great. I think I mentioned it, I don't know if we mentioned it, the Friends of Council on Aging are putting together a fundraising thing, and the response without even doing it has been great. People are getting on board, and a lot of it is because, and every, a lot of the comments and the people that are talking about being willing to participate is because of the housing and because we're addressing two things. It's a first time in a long time that I can honestly say it looks like the town may come together to solve a bunch, several problems, well, solve one problem and attack a problem that we'll be dealing with for decades, which is better housing for the people that live here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oppenheim. Thank you, David. Any other comments? I see a hand up, Elaine Gibbs has her hand up. Elaine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two things. The first is, I have nothing specific on any of the articles that are being presented except that I would ask that someone let us know, because I'm very confused about all these affordable housing articles. Ultimately, who is going to pay for the construction of the housing? Is it going to be the taxpayers, or is it going to be a private firm that comes in and does it? Because that's a question that's been asked, but I don't know, and I think a lot of people don't. And the second thing I would ask is under Item 3C6, any other articles that are to be placed tonight that haven't been discussed? If there is no information in the packet, I'd appreciate it if you'd let the public be able to speak during that agenda item because it will have been the first time we've seen them.
Thank you, Elaine. Yep, thank you very much. We'll get some light on the, you know, I think, I'm not an expert here, but I think it's likely we'll be partnering with developers and not doing the development by ourselves, but more to come there. I think the good news is we have a path forward that includes the land that we can develop, and we've been working hard on that, and as you well know, the 193 companion article to the senior center as well will provide the opportunity for increased housing as well. So, anyway, more to come, a lot more to come there. And if we do decide to discuss anything under 37, 36, excuse me, we certainly will open it up to public comment, okay? And we will allow public comment, obviously, on the evaluation of 251 Crowell Road, the pool, the Chatham Health and Swim Club as well. So, I'm just going to run down where we are with respect to our business agenda this evening and what we have in front of us. We are going to discuss, as I just mentioned, the report out on the feasibility study of the Chatham Health and Swim Club, consideration to abate remaining taxes for 1533 and Zero Main, a series of annual town meeting articles, 1610 Main Street zoning change, Stony Hill property, the 193 article that Mr. Oppenheim just mentioned previously, the contingency article or companion article to the senior center, our education articles for both the Cape Tech and the Montemoy Regional. We'll be voting for those tonight, placing voting, Chatham Municipal Airport, Capital Improvement Plan, perhaps another article to place related to water and sewer, that's not instant stone yet. We have two petition articles that have already been placed by virtue of there being a citizen's petition, but we will be voting to recommend this evening. And then, we're going to have a discussion on vote and ordering the recommendations in closing of the annual town meeting warrant for our meeting on May 6th. Then we have two committee appointments, Lydia's Cove and the Historic Business District Commission. So, that being said, any other public comments on that lineup, that litany of business this evening? Okay, hearing and seeing none, onto our first item. Our first major business agenda item is a report out on the study that was done on 251 Crowell Road, the Chatham Health and Swim Club. We have a presentation for the feasibility study this evening. We have seen the packet, and I will turn it over to Jill to introduce this item, and here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as the board is well aware, at the last annual town meeting, 2022, the town had voted to evaluate the property at 251 Crowell Road, which is formerly known as the Chatham Health and Swim Club property, and we had issued an RFP, had one respondent, and with us tonight is Tom Scarlata, who, he and his team, as well as engineers, provided the feasibility and evaluation study that is in your packet. The owners of the property do have a copy of this, as well as the realtors, and I believe everything else is up to date and certainly a lot to digest. So, this is posted on the town's website, and I don't think I have, I see Terry, I don't think there's anything else to add to this, so if the board is fine, let's just turn it over to Mr. Scarlata.
Thank you, Jill, and Mr. Scarlata, I just want the public to know this is an exhaustive study. This is an exhaustive study, so should you be interested, and I know many were at our last town meeting, this is on the town's website, Jill? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Scarlata, the mic is yours. Thank you. You feel I'm going to share my screen? Sure. And can everybody see this? Yes. Is that visible to everyone? Oh, thank you. So, thank you very much. My name is Tom Scarlata. I'm a principal with Bargman Henry Plus Archetype.
I'm a principal with Barmen Henry Plus archetype. I am actively involved in our firm with doing, I do a lot of swimming pools, and I do a lot of building evaluations, along with my team, which was GGD consulting engineers who review the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, Coastal Engineering, who review the civil aspects of the site, as well as structural, and TCI Consulting did our cost estimating, and TCI is from Farmith, Mass. So what we did, we all visited the site, we looked at available documents, where the documents that we review are all documented inside of the report, going back from the original construction documents from 1983 to subsequent additions and repairs that were done, and compiled the report. I'm not going to be as exhaustive as the report is, as I thank you for that, but, so I want to go over the highlights of what we did and what we found. Again, the purpose of what we were asked to do was to evaluate and identify deficiencies with both the site, the building, and each component of the building, meaning the building envelope, the exterior finishes, the roof, the doors, the condition of the interior spaces, and all the mechanical equipment, including the swimming pool. One of the tasks, as we walked through the building, was to identify what we would need to do to bring this building to compliance with the Mass Architectural Access Board, as well as with the American Disabilities Act, the ADA. If this was to be used as a municipal building of some sort, what type of utilities existed, what type of drainage was there, is there, and what's the infrastructure at the building? And we'll talk about that. And also, the last question on the request was, how does the pool in this building compare to a typical short course swimming pool that you would find in a public setting, whether municipal or private? And I put together some comparisons in this slide to talk about that. For those of you familiar, you have Crowell Road here, and then it's a 5,200 square foot site that slopes roughly 16 feet from the upper parking lot to the back of the site. So you have a 9,400 square foot wood structure. And then it's the driveway access, there are two private properties on either side. The back of the property here, I'm stupid, sorry, the back of the property here is the cemetery, there's actually a brand-new residence along the north side of the site, and then the DPW yard is located along here. This is from the original construction drawings, actually still showing the original septic system, which still is in operation or is in place. It was evaluated by my engineer from Coastal. And I would say that the day we were looking at the building, we actually had to be redirected around the site to get to it because they were bringing in the new sewer line, which is coming down Crowell Road, which one of the recommendations from Civil is if this is an active system, we certainly would recommend tying into a municipal sewer and not reworking, you know, a septic field that was built in 1983. For those of you who may have not been in the, ever been in the building, the upper level of the building, where it was originally built, contained entry lobby area, a large exercise area, and a swimming pool. The lower area in the original construction was the locker rooms and exercise room. This wing over here was actually originally built as an apartment. That was converted away from an apartment. The upstairs was made into additional exercise space. The lower level was made into a professional office, which appeared to have been occupied by a chiropractor. At one point, the mechanical equipment of this area was extended out, as well as, it was basically around 2018, 2019, the second buyer, the gentleman who bought the building and run it, attempted to make some accessibility upgrades to the building, so added some showers on the deck here, added an accessible toilet and some changing rooms, so that he made some accessible accommodations for the public at the swimming pool level. However, I would say the pool and the lower level are integrally tenanted because the locker rooms that are required to permit the pool are downstairs under a flight of steps and vice versa. So we have to look at the building all as one instrument regarding accessibility.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, sweetheart, how are you?
Hello?
Good. But more importantly...
Okay, the site, the, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please. Thank you.
Sorry, I was sorry about that. I heard some noise in the background. Anyway, so you have the entry drive off of the road, you have two private properties here, coming up to a large parking lot. The current drainage is lacking at the site. There's one catch base in here. It appears that these neighbors have taken some measures as they, when they built fences to create some berms to help prevent flooding onto their property. Part of the work that the current owner had done was to create in this upper little parking lot area, an accessible handicap spot, and put this walkway in, which is a non-compliant ramp. So the building is not accessible from a parking space up to the main entrance of the building to gain access. This is the grade and topography between the property and this is the DPW facility. Grade is very steep and actually rises up even further, then drops back down in terms of trying to attempt a physical connection walking-wise. It was one of the things we were asked to look at. Would be a fairly significant amount of earthwork required to create an accessible path from, call it this elevation here in front of the building, out and utilize any portion of the backside of the DPW property. This is the north side where there's an access road on the opposite side of the parking lot, up to a little service apron, which goes into a garage, the filter room, and then a lot of mechanical room or mechanical equipment that's out in the back of the building. Generally speaking, the roof needs to be replaced. It's particularly the north side here, it's well past its useful service life. The word signs of leaks in the pool area or the changing areas had been dry for quite a while, so it was hard to determine if the leaks were still active. But you can see the amount of just organic growth on the roof. There's a lot of deterioration of the wood, so that was included in our report in terms of some repairs here. There's no drainage, or there are gutters, but the gutters then just drain or discharge at the grade and let the water flow, so there's no control of that water. The building, surprisingly, the wood is in reasonably good shape. There are areas that are covered with organic growth, would need to be cleaned off, and then eventually there'll be some more repairs. But it wasn't, you know, for building, the owner of the building has maintained the building fairly well. It's just that the building was built in 1983, 1983, and things will sort of, will do age out. The pool itself was actually surprisingly in very good condition. This is the main pool, four-lane pool, 52 feet long. We noticed a few areas, which not surprisingly, small amounts of rust, which are very repairable condition here, some areas where, when some plaster work was done, there's some rough areas at the skimmers. But there was nothing within the pool tank that alarmed me compared to some other pools that I've worked on. The pool meets code requirements for the Public Health Department. Currently, it is not accessible right now. There is no lift involved, which is would be a requirement in a public swimming pool. A couple of things, the pool deck was put down, which is actually in fairly good condition. It's a textured surface around the perimeter of the pool to the drains. The coping had been, something had implied to, this is the perimeter coping, and that material's peeling off, and that would have to be scraped and cleaned off for, before, you know, before the pool could reopen, just to prevent any flaking into the pool. There is a pool cover, which again, in a heated pool inside is required by code. However, it's rusted out and it sees at this point, I couldn't, I couldn't turn the crank. That's just because the building has not been occupied or used since like March of 2020, I believe. But also, too, the location, the deck itself is just four feet, which again, we're required to have access around the pool. We had recommended in the report that the cover appears salvageable, but we would recommend putting a wall-mounted winch up on the wall so that I could have free access around the perimeter of the pool, including this backside. Right now, there's really no walking surface here. Part of the accommodations that the current owner made for accessibility was to put two open showers at the entries to the pool. This is fine as an accommodation, however, it does not meet the requirements of the Department of Public Health or the plumbing code, because it's an open area, you cannot, and there's actually a sign, you can't take a cleansing shower, there's no soap, there's no shampoo. So this is considered a rinse station. It does not count towards the fixture count. And when, the two showers up here would be needed to meet the requirements of the number of fixtures we had. One big change that we found when we went to the pool, that I was looking at previous photos, was that there was a ceiling in the pool for quite a while, and everything that was available last year that I could find on site showed a ceiling. Sometime in around 2019, 2020, the ceiling was removed, the wood trusses were exposed, and a closed cell insulation was sprayed over the entire surface of the roof, which number one, opened up the structure, provided a reasonable vapor barrier, moisture barrier to the perimeter, as well as insulating the space. However, when this happened, we took trusses that were originally in a cold attic and exposed them. It was, appears that they've been painted with just a latex paint, and a lot of the gusset plates, you can see little signs of rust that are coming in here, that would have to be addressed over a period of time. And the old sprinkler system, which you'll see here, which is an iron pipe, is obviously clearly rusting through the paint, because now it's been exposed to the environment of the swimming pool, and now it's just been sitting empty. So, long-term, this would have to be addressed, as well as just testing to make sure that this is a consistent envelope. And again, doing a thermal test is the best way to do it. When the building isn't operational, then you can actually see any voids in the insulation barrier. I would say, too, during our report, we had power, but we did not have running water, we didn't have heat, so we could not pour the filtration. We could not actually, we could look at the conditions from the exterior, look at the internals, we did find some operational and maintenance records, but again, we couldn't test equipment other than seeing that the lights were coming on and off. One of the questions that was asked of us was to compare this pool to a standard municipal pool or a lap pool. The pool, as I said, is 26 feet wide, it's four lanes, and it is 52 or 53, almost 53 feet long. A standard lap pool that, where a swim team could actually use is six lanes, 45 feet being the ideals, that gives me seven lanes, or six, seven-foot wide lanes with some extra space on the side, and it's 75 feet long, or 25 yards. And again, six is ideal, eight's preferred, and most municipal pools that I've done, where there is a swimming component or a competitive swimming program that needs to be accommodated, this is the base footprint that we would be using. As a point of comparison, I'm familiar with some other pools on the Cape. The YMCA pool in Barnstable is a 25-yard, eight-lane pool. The Sandwich Y, or the Sandwich High School pool is a six-lane pool, 25 yards. Willie's Gym up in Eastham, which is also, I believe, used by one of the high schools for their swim program, is a six-lane pool. It's a little narrow, but again, it would suffice for a swim team. And then Mass Maritime has a six-lane, 25-yard pool. Again, just in terms of what's, what other pools that are available on the Cape, if you were to compare the pool here to that. The interiors have changed over a period of time. There are a lot of the conditions, we have gypsum wallboard, carpeting. Well, it's clean, it was maintained, but obviously, there are some, they're showing signs of age. Some of the configurations, as we walked through, like I note this door, which goes out to the pool, even though it's outswinging, it's not accessible, there isn't a pushside space here. Some of the access to the other gym areas was not accessible, there's a step here. The locker rooms have been upgraded, they put in new lockers, they changed partitions, they put in new counters, but the configuration is not accessible. They're too narrow for a person in a wheelchair to maneuver through. And go around the, you know, the lights are old, most, a lot of the plumbing fixtures here were actually still some of the original fixtures, and again, they're just, they're exceeded their useful service life. This is the lower-level exercise area, which has a floor, which is in, an exercise floor and well, pretty good condition. Behind me in this photograph, there's a wall of mirrors, it was used obviously for dance or aerobics. Again, this is the access back to the locker rooms and exit door. Then next to this is the lower level or the chiropractic offices. The equipment that we looked at, and the filters were functional, they meet, these are small, small commercial slash residential type sand filters. They were sized to meet the pool turnover that's needed. That pool does use, it's a liquid chlorine and a liquid acid for pH balance. You know, it's got a lot of PVC piping, a lot of valves that we couldn't test. So it's part of any startup, that would need to be checked. These are, this is one of the heaters for the pool, there's two of them, one for the pool, main pool, one for the hot tub that's there. Again, there's a lot of stuff that's been brought in here. This space, which is the filter room, there's a garage on the other side for storage, as well as a lot of the mechanical equipment are also within a very warm, moist environment of the filtration equipment as well. This is a vent that goes directly out to the pool area. This is the service or the, I say the, not the fire alarm, but this is the electric service, part of the electric service, some of the communication that comes with the building. This is an old sprinkler, the sprinkler system that is in the building. It's a glycol system because it used to run up in the cold attic spaces. A new system where it's run in an attic space, or even in an auditorium, we typically use a, just a dry system, so you're not dealing with the glycol in terms of the liquid in that, just as, it's kind of an antiquated system that's no longer used. The mechanical equipment, which is the dehumidifier unit, which serves the pool area, which is relatively new and in good condition. However, though, in 1983, when the system was laid out, you're supplying both your supply air and return air on the south side of the pool, of course, on the pool wall, high in the air. There's very little circulation of air in the pool, particularly down at the pool level. So what happens is that as the air blows out, it's cycled through the high part of the pool, it comes right back to it, not necessarily getting into, excuse me, the moving air away from the water surface. Again, we found this as a typical condition in a number of areas where we popped the ceiling, where there's just a whole host of old wires, whether they're phone wires, abandoned cabling, that would all have to be cleared out as part of any renovation work. Again, power was working in the building, we just couldn't be able to test, you know, a lot of other things. Again, you can see none of the domestic water was insulated, water piping shows signs of corrosion, particularly in the pool area. So again, we identified in our report immediate needs, you know, as well as long-term needs that we saw with the pool, just based on the age of the building. As we looked at the building, the primary accessibility need is a communication between the lower level and the upper level, so that the locker rooms, even if they are not accessible, I can maneuver from the lower level up to the upper level of the building. One way to do it would be put a Lula Lift or a limited-use elevator in this area where you have this very 1980s-looking open wood stair, which would have to be changed. And again, we would need to get a variance to use a Lula Lift to make this work, but they would be able to get an individual in a wheelchair between the two levels of the pool. But again, that's a minimal, but also we have to start looking at other conditions that are not particularly accessible and make other improvements. Again, that's outlined in the report, it was included in some, in some of the costs, in the costs that we have budgeted out for long-term. The other area, which would give you more flexibility, would be put, would be to build a real elevator on the front of the building. We would need to create a vestibule off the parking lot, which would be here, elevator machine room, and then the elevator would bring you up into sort of the... bring you up into sort of the lounge area of the current lobby. And that would give you the ability to come and use this as your entrance, because a Lula lift would still require, to me, somehow get somebody with a ramp up to this entrance here, where this would get me up to where I want to be, and also to the lower level, and again, make the building fully accessible. The way we broke down the work, we, we made a decision to say, based on what we saw, the, you know, what we couldn't test, if you were to open the building or the, to the building, you know, as is, we saw a scope of immediate work, the biggest component of that being the roof and some, a lot of testing, a lot of the equipment. The next thing we identified was the major ADA work or the compliance work, the Lula lift with a number on it of a little $350,000. Then the elevator option, which would conclude the elevator, the construction of a vestibule, a shaft, and both of these options would also inquire us to bring up the electrical service. You have a 400-amp service, which works for now, but it'll be too small if we bring an elevator or a lift into it. And then the long-term improvements that we talked about throughout the report, siding, finishes, doors, other accessibility requirements, brought the total up to 300, 3.8 million dollars. When we first submitted the report, it came back, they asked, can you give me a number of what it would take to demolish the building? So what we did, we took the volume of the building. My estimator gave me the unit cost. It come, and that would be tearing the building down, which would include some abatement, removing everything, backfilling the site to create the slope that's there, and just putting some lumen seed down. And that budget was $425,000. So, and this is all outlined in the report. And with that, I'd be happy to open this up to questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Scarlet. Again, for the public's urination, this report was, it's like four inches thick. So if people are really interested, they can get online and take a look. And I really do appreciate your report. I'm echoing here a little bit. I am on mute on my computer. Anybody on? Jill, you on? Can you, am I still echoing? Okay. All right. Off to the select board here. And then I'll throw it out to comments from the public as well, having heard this report. But select board comments, they've had the report for a while. They've taken a look. So, Mr. Castro, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As everyone will recall, it was last town meeting where we put forward an article to support this study, because there had been a petition article for this town to essentially look into the acquisition of the swimming pool. And now we've done this. We did meet recently in executive session to consider this report as well. I certainly understand and sympathize with the desire of a lot of people to have a public swimming pool in town. We know that in addition to the building costs for such a facility, there are also associated staffing and insurance costs and potential liability considerations that would have to be factored in. This is an extremely, as you point out, and as is evidenced from Mr. Scarlet's report, this is a very exhaustive and comprehensive analysis. The bottom line is that in order to acquire this property, and we're not even talking about the, the acquisition cost of the, of the real estate, it's on 1,1 million, that there's a lot of work that has to be done, both in the immediate term, and then in intermediate term to basically make sure that everything is up to code. We would have to choose between the limited-use elevator or full elevator option that would reduce the cost somewhat. And then there are long-term improvements to the structure, as you would have with any structure. And that's a lot of money. I think if, if we really wanted to have a town pool, we would be, it would be more advisable to locate a piece of property, whether it's this or some other property, and build something from the ground up. I think it would be far more cost-effective for us. So I, those are my responses, those are my observations on the report and the analysis. So I'll leave it for others to make similar, her other, her different comments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Castro. Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Jeff. I think Dean has said it really eloquently, and I agree with everything he said. I can't add anymore to, to the comments.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Shell.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think that, I guess it was about a year ago or thereabouts that there was this ground swell for finding a way to make a swimming pool available as a community asset to the community. I'm very sympathetic to that, very much in favor of that idea, concept. This obviously is not a practical answer to that. I guess I would emphasize, they did a great job. They did a very thorough job. And what they essentially told us was that to take something that's 30 or 40 years old and try and remake it into a current facility that, that complies with all the current requirements and codes and so forth, is just not a very practical answer. I, we can think about how else we might address this concern or this interest, but I just think this is not, it's quite obvious this is not it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Mr. Metters.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Don't say this with, as a joke, but we really got our money's worth with this feasibility study. I mean, in all seriousness, I mean, it is very detailed. Every little nook and cranny was evaluated and commented on. So, you know, very grateful for this report. I, I, you know, I support the concept of a town exploring a town pool at some point, some location, sometime. I notice a lot of mixed feelings and a lot of, a lot of history back and forth. But looking at what this report has put in front of us, the associated cost with this property, plus whatever the acquisition cost could end up being, we regretfully would not be doing our job if we were to put this on the, put this forward as, as the option for the town pool. It's, it's just not, it's just not the right site with the factors that have been put forth. There may be another town parcel that we could explore and decide and put it, put it before the voters at a different time and time. But this location, this project, in the, based on all the details that are presented in this feasibility study, it's not something that I could support. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Metters. And I won't repeat the comments of my fellow select board members, but I, I'm in agreement. This is a 40-year-old building that we'd have to put 5.4 million dollars in, and then that would, plus another 1.1 or thereabouts, to purchase the property itself. So I, I'm going to take a pass on this one. We have roof, roof issues. We have major ADA issues. We have infrastructure issues. We have topography issues. We have, we would have liability and staffing issues. And so if we, and I, I'm, I would love to have a pool in town. I'd love it. But this, in my estimation, certainly in my fellow select board's estimation, this is not the, the place for it at 6.5 million dollars. So, I'm going to take a pass as well. But this was a petition article, last town meeting. We did follow up. And again, third time, I probably said it, Bargman Henry and Archetype Inc., if you want a study that is A+, you would hire these folks. That's a plug. I mean, this is, this is unbelievable. It really is. So anyway, you guys have done a great job, and I don't think we're going to move anything or place anything this evening, or, and I will open it up for public comment. Does anybody, I know we had a whole bunch of people that signed that petition last year. So we made a commitment to, to get this report done, and here it is. So, I don't see anybody with their hands up. Okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna move on. Select board, thank you very much. Thank you, Tom, for an excellent report. And you can
Thank you very much.
Feedback to your, your company and your, your fellow, your peers that you did an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You bet. Our next item on our business agenda is to consider a request to the assessors to abate remaining taxes on 1533 and 0 Main Street. This is by Dale Kelly on the Director of Assessors. I believe we had somebody from the Board of Assessors online, Jill, did we not?
Yeah, I see Candace. Candace, were you making the report, or is Dale going to make it?
Alex. Alex, you're on mute.
I'm going to unmute myself, sorry.
Hi, Alex. Welcome.
I think Dale is here as well. If you have any technical questions, as you noted in your report, Dale did provide the staff report on the taxes on 1533 Main Street and to abate them. Since the town took this property for housing, this is more of a procedural housekeeping type of item. And Pat Costello, Town Council, has weighed in that we need to take this action to request the Board of Assessors to officially abate the taxes on the parcel.
Okay. Any discussions? Okay. How about a motion? Mr. Shell.
I will move, I don't see the language here, but I would, I would move that we request the abatement of the taxes in accordance with the staff memo, if that.
Second, Mr. Castro. Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Okay. Second, upon this request being granted, the remaining apportioned tax due on the town-owned parcel will be abated. Okay. Are we good? Alex, you all set?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Stony Hill Property, this is the contingency and/or, I'm sorry, stepping stones.
Stepping stones, I'll step away.
1610 Main Street, where you're going to step away, Mr. Metters. Thank you. So we have a zoning change article. I missed one, sorry. 2023 Annual Town Meeting Article Review Votes and for the warrant, 1610 Main Street. This is a zoning change, which would be contingent on the town meeting voting affirmatively for 1610 as a, as a site for our Center for Active Living, and a planning board recommendation, which was taken last night, I believe. I watched it, and they were in the affirmative as well. So I need a motion, please.
I will move that we recommend the attached article to
It's a, we'll place it first.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. To place the article on the warrant this year.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? None? Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Dyken says aye as well. We're going to recommend now. Mr. Shell.
I move that we recommend that article.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Castro. What's the
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to note that the planning board voted unanimously 7-0 to approve the, to approve the recommendation for the zoning bylaw change contingent on action at town meeting.
Yeah, it was a very quick meeting. It was a swift meeting, and it was an interesting, slight discussion. Anyway, Ms. Davis was there as well, as was I. Okay, this, and Mr. Shell. So we have a, a motion to recommend, it's been seconded, Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Mr. Metters had recused himself in that vote, and welcome back, Corey. Next item is our companion article that Mr. Oppenheim spoke to earlier this evening. And we need a motion to place the contingency article for affordable and attainable housing for 193 Main Street, a transfer of our town's local designation for short-term rental for housing, which is a really neat thing. Mr. Castro, please.
Ms. Chairman, thank you. I did ask a funding question of Alex yesterday, and I think she has a clarification on it.
Go ahead, Alex.
I'm supportive of this, but I just
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, upon talking to select board member Castro the other day, we found out that the select board has not petitioned the general court to establish the funds. So these two funds for the 1% for the attainable housing, as well as 1% for the elementary school, need to be, we need to petition the general court for this, that action. So, right now, the funds have not been received yet, but we will ask the select board to do that at your meeting next week, to petition the legislature. So what we've done is we've looked at available funding sources, so we can have this article moved forward to town meeting. And the recommendation is to use the tax levy, knowing that we only have $233,000 available in free cash at this time. And there's a petitioned article, which is proposing to use $200,000 of that. So we thought we would use the tax levy. And what we will do is raise our local estimated receipts by the $75,000, not to have any impact. The other thing that that does is also frees this up to be used for, the study can be used to design attainable and affordable and/or affordable housing, so either one or both. So that's the change in the language. And I can share my screen if you'd like to see that.
Please. Thank you, Alex.
So, Alex, the article that was voted in town meeting spoke to both affordable and attainable, I believe, right?
Yes. And that's why
Okay.
we would look to have that to be affordable and attainable. And let me share my screen.
Yep. Thanks, Alex.
Actually, it was the opposite. The article was limited to attainable.
Correct. So here is the article. So we've, what I've done here is I've noted the new language is underlined, and the language we're deleting, we're striking. So to see if the vote will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 for design and engineering, same language. And then in the motion, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 from the tax levy for design and engineering.
Okay. And then the article to petition, to change the language is going to be next week? We're going to put on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, super.
Yeah. And that would simply relate to using the 1% of this
The 1 and 1.
Yeah.
Okay. I think this is a great finesse. Thank you. Mr. Castro.
I, I move to place this on the warrant, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Super. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you.
I move to recommend.
Super.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. So, super. Nice job, you guys. Thanks, Alex. Good finesse.
Thank you.
Okay. The next up is our education assessment articles. Alex, you're, you're there. And why don't you just go through the slight changes, and then we'll, we'll get this moved.
Yes, thank you. Again, this, the agenda report had a change as of late Thursday night, when the Monomoy Regional School Committee voted the budget. So Cape Cod Regional Technical High School is the same amount as was presented, and you did get an updated report on Friday showing the amount from the Monomoy Regional School District, which is $9,710,449, an increase of 2.07% over the current fiscal year. And for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School, it's an increase of 5.55% for the assessment, for a total of $376,103. And I'm happy to discuss anything if you have any particular questions on it.
Any questions for Alex? Any questions for Alex? Mr. Castro.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alex, we were given a handout this, this evening. How does that differ from what was in the packet? Because the numbers, the dollars look the same, at least in the
The dollars, yes, the dollars are the same. Those are just the updated articles. I'm not sure if you received those originally, but we did update the warrant articles.
Okay. I move to place, should we take these separately?
Yes, please.
I move to place the article for Cape Cod Regional Technical High School on the warrant.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? None. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
I move to recommend.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Chair says aye. How about the regional school?
I move to place the Monomoy Regional School District article for the operating budget on the warrant.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Recommendation?
I move to recommend.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says a resounding aye. Thank you very much. Next, Chadham Municipal Airport, Federal Fiscal Year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan, a vote to place and to recommend?
Um.
I'm sorry, what did I miss? No, I'm sorry, the PEG. I keep, I keep skipping ahead one article this evening. Okay, we have the PEG, the PEG Funds, Monomoy Educational Cable Access and Equipment Capital Appropriation Article, both vote to place and recommend. These are, these are the PEG monies, I believe. Yep.
That, that is correct, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is a separate article that would be presented both to the towns of Harwich and Chadham. And the funding source for this is the educational is the Educational Cable Access Program. So again, similar, as we get the cable access receipts for the public, educational and governmental, we segregate the educational portion out. So for Chadham, share of this cost is $13,114.21, and we have a balance in the Educational Cable Fund of $608,925. And again, this is to be used to fund the upgrade and management of classroom equipment and TV studio at the Monomoy Regional High School.
So, Alex, that's a pretty good number, 608,925. 609,000 in that fund.
Yes, and we're using $15,000 of that to fund the Monomoy Regional School operating budget because they've identified that as tech cable-related costs.
Great. Good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Shell.
I move to place.
Super.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. Great. Recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Metters. Mr. Metters, what say you?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. Now, onto the Chadham Municipal Airport, Federal Fiscal Year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan Projects. So we have Mr. Whalen, Terry Whalen, here. Mr. Whalen?
Yes, good evening. So this is a standalone capital article, as we've been past practice for multiple years, with seeking funding for match for projects on the airport property. As you may recall, back in 2020, as I noted in the staff report, there was a much more expansive article that included beyond the airport properties, and that was on the order of 1.9 million. This, again, following up on, excuse me, outreach that has been conducted by the Airport Commission and taking a different track. This is a significantly pared-down request. And again, this is only for the permitting and obstruction removals on airport property to leverage federal funding.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Any discussion? Any questions? Okay. How about a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to place this article.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shell.
Second.
Thank you, Shereen. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. Recommendation?
Mr. Chair, I, I move to recommend.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Thank you very much. Okay, we have another item this, this evening. We have an article that came, came forward from a meeting of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee just last evening, which suggests to amend the Water Conservation General Bylaws. We have not reviewed these yet. They've been reviewed by Mr. Costello. Now, we received, I received redline copies today, if you will, and I'm gonna open it up for discussion about any consideration this evening or future consideration. And so I just want to poll the Select Board, if you will, for, we have not discussed this, so I'm, we have Mr. Dunkinson here. I know, I see Jeff Colby as well as the Chair of our, the eminent Chair, I should say, of our Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. But I, I gotta poll the, the Select Board here. Bob, why don't you weigh in, and then I'm gonna poll the committee as well, the Select Board, I should say, for their thoughts on consideration or discussion this evening versus a future evening. Mr. Dunkinson?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Yes, these came out of a meeting held by the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee this past Monday. They have been working on proposed changes to the water conservation, or the, actually, it's Water Supply Emergency Bylaw, Chapter 261 of the town's general bylaw. Since last fall, in response to a request from your board to take a look at it, primarily based on feedback received from the public last summer and early fall regarding providing some clarity to the public on the, some of the water conservation measures that were implemented last summer. And so the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee took those under advisement. They looked at what had been done last summer, through the early fall. They looked at the existing chapter in the bylaw, and you have before you their recommendations. Unfortunately, they were somewhat late in getting to you because we were waiting for town council's final review and basically sign off on the article. But basically, what it does is, it really does two things. One, it codifies some of the restrictions that your board implemented last fall, so the public can see them ahead of time and know that they may or may not be actually implemented. You know, if you're looking at Section 261-5, we've added some new restrictions, which were ones that, following discussion with your board and the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee in the community last summer and fall, were implemented, namely specifying that personal vehicles and recreational boats could not be washed on a routine basis when we're in a water emergency, watering during or within 48 hours of rainfall, and then the installation of new sod seating or landscaping was prohibited during the water emergency. The other thing that this does is it broadens the scope of this article, the bylaw, to include private wells. There was a fairly significant amount of discussion regarding that, you know, last summer, fall, that are, under our current, as then, bylaw, the restrictions only really applied to people on the municipal water system, although there was a concerted effort to get people on private wells to abide by those restrictions as well, because as stated by numerous individuals, you know, we all draw from the same aquifer, if you will. So that is now codified in here with a change to the definition of water users or water consumers. And then a third aspect that the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee recommended was a change to 261-8, which is what happens when people violate the bylaw, because again, there was a feeling that, you know, not everybody was complying with the water restrictions that were put in place last summer and fall and actually are still in place today. So that was expanded, and then along with that, the board, sorry, the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee also proposed a change to Chapter 1 of the general bylaw, which is where the fine schedules are specifically called out, and you should have that as part of your packet as well, because right now, the fine schedule is the first offense is a warning, second offense is $100 fine, and then each subsequent offense is $200. And again, the committee just, you know, heard feedback and felt that that was not sufficient necessarily to get people's attention, if you will. So they did propose a tiered fine schedule tied to the level of drought that we are in, and also the impact of water supply or water pumping on the town's municipal wells. And included in your packet was what we euphemistically call the rainbow spreadsheet, which basically indicates different levels of water emergency, and whether that is because of drought conditions or because of the period of time that the town is pumping our water supply wells. You know, there was a lot of discussion that, you know, things start to get critical when we start pumping our water supply wells, you know, say, more than 15 or 16 hours in a day, whether it be because of drought conditions, or like, well, last summer, unfortunately, we had drought conditions and PFOS at the same time. So last summer, we had wells offline, which caused the other wells to be pumped more hours per day, you know, and we had the drought conditions. Normally, hopefully, we only have one or the other. But it provides an opportunity to put water restrictions in place, depending on whether or not it's a drought condition, or a water infrastructure issue, or a combination of both, like we had last summer. And then it indicates the various restriction categories, whether it's lawn watering, or shrub and flower garden watering, or washing boats, or whatever. And it hopefully clearly indicates whether those things are or are not allowed based on the status that we happen to be in. And it also, for this first time, includes the private wells in that, and includes the fine schedule for private wells as well. So the committee reviewed all that for a final time on Monday and requested that this be brought to your board as the Water and Sewer Commissioners for consideration of placing on the warrant for this year, so that this clarity and, you know, the rainbow spreadsheet would be available for public education this upcoming summer, should it be needed. You know, I'm happy to report, when I reviewed the groundwater monitoring wells this morning, that the Chadham well is almost back to where it would be on average this time of year. However, the monitoring well in Brewster that is used by most of the water purveyors in the region as kind of the bellwether monitoring well, is still significantly down. Although it is improving, it is still significantly down from where it would normally be this time of year. You know, we've had rain now for about a little over 24 hours, but I can tell you, when I looked just before this meeting, we are still under an inch of rainfall from this current event. So even though it seems like it's been raining for an extended period of time, the total volume is not great. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And as the Chair alluded to, we do have Jeff Colby here, the Chair of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Bob, for that, that summary. The, the work here is, is excellent. And, you know, I'm pleased that they brought something forward. It's just we're voraciously time constrained. We're closing the warrant this evening, and I don't believe it's fair to the town. This is my personal opinion now. I've yet, I've yet to poll my fellow Select Board members, but I don't believe we're being fair to the town by not airing this in a more public manner. I think, I think we have to do that as responsible members of the Select Board, to be honest with you. I'm not comfortable just saying we're gonna place and recommend this evening. I'm not comfortable. So that's my opinion. I would like to seek a way to further the consideration of this going forward and trying to get it on the warrant somehow. That's what I would like to do. That's my preferred outcome here. Now, whether we can pull that off or not, I don't know. But I'm not comfortable placing and recommending it this evening. I, I barely read it, and I understand most of what's in there has been in there, but the, the new grid is, is new, and, you know, it's really an excellent piece of work, and I'd love to get in front of the town. I just, we gotta close the warrant tonight. So now I'm gonna poll my Select Board, and Mr. Metters and Mr. Nacastro.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna comment on the merits of the proposal because, like was mentioned, it was just recently put, sent to us earlier today. Haven't had a lot of time to really digest it, so I don't know what I would even comment on with, you know, the proper input. The mechanics of this is tough. This is a topic that's gonna generate some questions and concerns and input, and that's great. Unfortunately, you know, an article or an agenda listing of any other articles to place and/or vote if needed, I don't think would, would do us well to put something of this significance on the, you know, for, for debate tonight. I think just proper posting requirements kind of handcuff us and really moving forward with this discussion. I think it, it warrants discussion, absolutely, but it, it, I think no one would have a reasonable expectation that this is gonna be discussed tonight by looking at our posted agenda. Those who us, who have signed on tonight may have, maybe considered something like this with last-minute notices, but I think just from purely mechanical perspective, I don't believe we could talk about this tonight. For the town meeting, the only other option, and I would look for some guidance on this, is if it were discussed at a future Select Board meetings on the merits, and we can flush out the conversation over the next couple weeks, whether this could be put on as, as an agenda item on a special town meeting warrant within the body of the regular town meeting warrant. Not ideally great mechanical, but I do think it is doable. So I will let others comment on that concept, but as far as any discussion tonight, I don't, I believe we are limited.
Thank you, Mr. Metters. Mr. Nacastro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm the liaison to the Water and Sewer Committee. I was present yesterday. I've been present at all the meetings where they've discussed this. They've done a lot of work on this, but I believe it would be a violation of the open meeting law if this board tonight were to consider this article and take any kind of deliberation or votes on it, because there has been insufficient notice to members of the public about it. I suspect this is, as topic as Mr. Metters indicated, that is going to generate comment on, on various sides, because it makes substantive additions to the town bylaw. I'm not sure it will even be amenable to resolution in just one session of the Select Board. I'm not sure that I would be conducive to advancing this to the annual town meeting of this year, myself. But I will defer a consideration of that until, for the time when this board discusses it. But it's, it's a complicated topic, and I appreciate the committee sending it to us. But I did intimate to them yesterday that there might be some question as to whether this board could discuss it tonight, and I really don't think we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nacastro. Ms. Davis?
I agree with both Cory and Dean on this. This is a bylaw change that we need to have further, more public discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, and Mr. Shell?
First of all, I haven't read it, so I'm not in a position to discuss it tonight. I, I, and, and this is a subject that's been notionally on the table since last summer. And, you know, with all due respect, I'm, I'm quite sure that the Water and Sewer Committee has done yeoman service, diligent service, but if they took that long to get here with this, it seems to me that rushing this to town meeting tonight or any other time is, is imprudent, if not a violation of some law or another. I, I do wanna just ask a question. I'm, I'm glancing at Section 261-5, which are the restricted water uses, and it appears to me that these are all restrictions that at one time or another we imposed last summer. And if that is the case, I guess I'm wondering why we can't, on a test basis or whatever, next summer, if, if as and when needed, continue to use these tools to protect the water supply without, and, and in the meantime, have discussions with, for example, the summer residents who have a big stake in this as well, even though they don't necessarily, they don't vote, and, and sort this out for a, a town meeting that is in the fall or next summer, whenever, or next spring, whenever it is, but not, not this year.
Yeah, it, Mr. Shell, we certainly can enact the same regulations, or they're actually in force now, as Dr. Dunkinson noted earlier in our discussion. I totally agree with the fellow Select Board members. I think it's very unfair, would not be possible even to, to consider this this evening. It was not on the agenda. However, it will be on future agendas, and will take and do consideration, certainly have enough public input to, to, to give it fair, fair airing. And I do, and we do, very much appreciate the work of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. We've done great work here, and this will certainly get due and deep consideration. So thank you very much for your efforts. It's just not gonna happen this year. Okay, thank you. We have two petition articles that are, that are by their...
Mr. Chair, you have a handout from...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, yep. We really don't have an agenda item, Elaine, so I think I'm not gonna call on you. Okay. No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna recognize you, Elaine. It's not an agenda item. We'll, we'll, we will definitely have an agenda going forward, okay? All righty.
I was gonna thank you for your...
Petition, thank you, thank you, Elaine. Petition articles are next. We have, they're automatically placed. We have two this evening. We have obstruction removals in the airport flight path, reimbursements to property owners. Rellen Munson brought it forward. We've had some review and, and discussion. So they've placed by, by virtue of it being a public petition. So our business this evening is to take a position with respect to that petition article. So I'm gonna turf it to Mr. Shell, who I know has been active in this regard, and Mr. Shell?
Yes, I, I understand that this petition article is a, a sort of a one-off thing. I've, I've actually had further input from a number of people on the subject. I think generally there is a, a sense in... I think generally there is a sense in the community that it is fair, given the potential expense, the surprise, if you will, of this requirement showing up. People can say fairly that folks should have known. It's a bylaw. It's there to be observed, you know, at the time you buy your house or whenever. But at the same time, it is, and it's a significant expense for an action that is, I think, fairly characterized as a community benefit, namely the safety of aircraft and the safety of people who live around the airport. And on that basis, I, as we discussed before, put together and recommended a bylaw amendment that was Chapter 100 bylaw amendment in order to effectuate this if it were passed, so that it could have some effect. And on that basis, I personally would vote to recommend this article. As a board member, I won't move to recommend at this point. I want to hear what everybody else has to say, but I'm in favor of doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. And Mr. DeCastro has his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The voters will recall that, I think it was last week or so, we did, as Mr. Shell indicated, vote to place and recommend an amendment to the bylaw that allows the Airport Commission the option of doing the work uniformly rather than having multiple tree surgeons or tree folks go in and submit reimbursement receipts and so forth. And so I think that with that in, assuming that's adopted at town meeting, that lays out the process that would facilitate, I think, the goal of the petitioner. I don't know if any of the petitioners are here to speak to this. You will recall that I did inquire of Mr. Costello, the Town Council, last week about the form of motion that might be offered at town meeting that would be consistent with the bylaw language, and that's, I think, going to be important. So I would certainly encourage the petitioners, who will be the ones offering the motion on their own article, to perhaps consult with, through the town manager, with Town Council, so that everything can be in sync. I don't know if it's going to take a full $200,000 to do all of this, but that's what's in the petition. So I'm going to support the article, the petition article, if Mr. Shell offers a motion to support. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else for this petition article? Yeah, I'm fine with it as well. Mr. Shell?
Yeah, if I can just add one thing here. I think that one of the things that is hopefully going to be promoted by this is a collaborative effort by the Airport Commission and the homeowners who are affected to do this in the most efficient and collaborative way, which I would hope will also translate into less cost for the town. So that was also behind it. I will move to recommend this petition article.
Yeah, I'm going to make a comment. I think the petition article was well thought out by Mr. Munson, and I think it prompted your efforts, Mr. Shell, in crafting a compromise that I think is workable, very efficient, fair, and workable. So I think it really has turned out to be a neat, I think, example of how citizens and select boards can govern together and get stuff done. So I'm certainly supportive. So you just moved it?
I'll second.
Okay, Dean's second. Okay, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Yes, Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And Mr. DeCastro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. So it's been replaced by the petitioners and recommended by us. We have another petition article this evening for consideration, one for special legislation for an alcohol license for Pates. And I am going to ask just, Shauna, to just give us a little background on how, as a select board, we're able to do this. And, yeah, just please give us some background. Thank you, Shauna.
Sure, so I'm trying to remember the year. I believe it was 87, 86 or 87. The town had petitioned the legislature for two additional licenses tied to West Chatham and to the Kroll Road area. Those two are now held by mom and pops and by branches. So this is possible to have additional annual licenses granted to a town above the quota system. This is the only way to get that done. Pates has chosen to do it by petition article.
But it certainly, that avenue was certainly available to them, and it's legal for us to so approve or to recommend or place. It's already placed, okay? Mr. Metters and then down the line.
Prior, there was like a more like a regional or area regionals, which was kind of a broader section of town, where now we have to have a very specific address.
Yes, if you would recall, before Chatham Works was Chatham Works, there was some interest in bringing another restaurant to that location. We were told at that time by Rep. Peak that the legislature would no longer consider a broad area, but wanted a specific address to tie the license to.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you. Mr. Shell and Mr. DeCastro?
Just a question. If this petition article is passed by town meeting, no further action is required to accomplish the objective of granting an additional license?
The special legislation would need to be filed with the general court, which would then need to be approved before we could issue or consider issuing the full, the year-round license.
And who files the special legislation?
The town.
So we would be authorized to do that?
Yes, by this.
Thank you.
Mr. DeCastro has his hand up, I think?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Shauna, this is just a follow-up to Mike's question. So Town Council has provided sample legislation. Is that what we would file?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe Attorney Riley may be on the call, if you have any questions for him?
Let's see.
Or he was?
Yeah, I just, I had a couple of comments. Just a couple of comments by myself. Very viable business that has a seasonal alcohol license, so they literally close down from when to when, Shauna?
The board has extended their license generally annually from, so they're closed January 16th to April 1st.
So just from an operational perspective, you're owning a restaurant, and you have to either, you know, your employees either aren't there, they're not there all winter. So what do you do with your employees? So you have to rehire, you have to find new employees, employees are hard to get, blah, blah, blah. Plus, it's an asset, a year-round asset, where we have very few restaurants, frankly, open in the winter in Chatham. There aren't enough restaurants open. So I frankly, as a, you know, I would favor this very much. Ms. Davis and then Mr. Metters?
This is, you know, this provides some economic stability for the employees that work for this company, but also opportunity for, you know, more of a viability to the community itself. So I'm supportive of this moving forward, and I'll just turn it back to you.
Thank you. Mr. Metters?
More than supportive, because when, you know, COVID kicked in, they did the takeout, you know, in the off-season when they're, you know, they could have just turned every employee down and away. They're working on this little takeout system, smaller scale, but it's keeping the employees, you know, employed, keeping the business going. Anything that we can do to help a small business like this, I would never pause at supporting this. I think we really, really should do this. So I think it's a very reasonable ask, and I'm fully supportive of this.
So it sounds as though Mr. Riley does not have to speak. I will take a motion to recommend, please.
So moved. So moved.
Oh, sorry. I'm going to recommend it. I just wanted to add the point here. This is part and parcel of the development that I think we see, we see coming along in West Chatham, and I enthusiastically move the recommendation of this petition article.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's a recommendation. Okay, in a second? Okay, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. DeCastro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is the vote...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Vote ordering, recommending, and closing of the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant for May 6th. And we also have motion assignments. I'm going to turf this to Jill and also obviously to the rest of the board. So let's go through the, let's go through this warrant, and let's see how it lines up. Jill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your packet, in your packet, you have some suggested ordering, and right now, with what was voted tonight, we are up to, it looks like, 59 warrant articles. So tonight's the night, if you want to move anything, but also keep under consideration, there could be a consent agenda where you and the moderator would work together to lump some items together so that they can be put on a consent calendar unless a voter objects, and that you can pull them off. So we're going to write the warrant articles so that they can be, so the article will be pretty specific, and if there's a funding amount, that will be noted in the article. So just want to keep that in mind. So as we have it here, we have four ballot questions that we're also going to have to order. The first one, it relates to the charter revisions that were voted in 2022. And then following that would be a ballot question for the Council on Aging. I'm just naming them however you want to order them. Council on Aging, Center for Active Living, the Transfer Station Project, and the Belt Filter Press Project. And that would go on a separate ballot, on a separate ballot, but included in the warrant as ballot questions. From there, just I'll keep talking until you want me to stop, are the financial articles that you see pretty much in the same order that they have in, provided in the past. So some current housekeeping items, like prior year bills and budget adjustments to the current fiscal year, if there is any, and then the fixed salary is consolidated, revolving funds, the town operating budget, the school district agreement amendments, assessments, and again, gets through the appropriations through the five-year capital plan. And then in your packet, beginning on Article 17 is where the capital project borrowing authorization is for the Center for Active Living. And then the companion articles for the zone change, the declaration of surplus property at Stony Hill for attainable housing. And then we also kept the housing-related theme under that for the surplus at Stepping Stones and the reuse of the structures. From there, we had ordered the water capital projects, including the water capital for the South Chatham Iron and Magnes study, including the water treatment to address the PFOS in Magnes at Wells 5 and 8. And that also is a ballot question, so that's number 25. And then following that, I have another ballot question, which would be the Transfer Station Project article. And then next after that is a sewer wastewater pollution control facility, ballot question for the Belt Filter Press, which is debt, so those are all debts. And then following that, you'll see the capital project for the Eldridge Public Library for the HVAC system. And then we get into fiscal articles that are more general, the Bike Ways Master Plan, the Eastman Acquisition, the surf-capable boat dredging, and then we get into some of the social infrastructure for the childcare voucher program, the Florence, Dr. Florence-Selden Family Support Program, OPEB trust appropriation, which is a transfer from overlay surplus, and then a new expendable trust fund, I'm sorry, an expendable trust fund that was voted last year with a refresh for an appropriation, a new inflation article, and then the wastewater IMA Capital Stabilization Fund, where that's the transfer from free cash for the 2.265 million that we have been holding and carrying forward from the Chatham and Harwich IMA program. The opioid settlement fund is a designation for a specific purpose. And then we got into some general bylaw amendments for the trust composition, the local option to accept a majority vote for specific housing-related votes. And then most of it is financial, the Chatham Airport, the capital plan. We also had airport-related, we included the petition for the flight path observation as well as a general bylaw amendment for Chapter 100. And then the last bank of articles relates to the CPC, Community Preservation Article. And then the last article that's not on your form yet is the petition article for the alcohol license for the Pates property.
Where's that now? I missed that one.
That wasn't included.
Oh, okay, so that would be, so that's prior to the CPA articles?
I just have it at the end, just so we didn't...
At the very end?
Yeah.
I would put it above.
You can put it wherever.
Yeah, I put it above that, if you would, maybe after the petition article for the flight path. Or maybe, excuse me, after the GBL amendment, you know, after my mic's...
Yeah.
Yep, so then I would do the Pates petition article.
Yeah, so that gets us up to 59 articles.
You know, I like, just in general, I like the way it's laid out. I do. I mean, yes, Mr. DeCastro and then Mr. Shell?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would suggest on the, I don't know if Mike feels the same way, on the airport, the article, we just did the petition article, and then you might want to put the amendment first, I don't know, before the petition article. I don't care.
To me, it's six of one, half dozen.
I was suggesting have the petition article after GBL amendment.
Yeah, the petition article on the airport.
Yeah.
After the amendment.
After the amendment, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting.
That's what I think, yeah.
I don't care. I don't know whether...
Let's leave it alone.
Okay.
Let's leave it alone.
So are you okay?
The other comment I wanted to make is, I assume you're going to ask for speakers, and I, the only item on which I really would have a preference to speak would be the library one, which is Article 28. I'd like to offer that motion. And I did suggest last week, I still feel, on the COA Number 17, I think that the motion and speaker, principal speaker, who should be the Chair of the Council on Aging, that does not limit any of us to speak as well, but I think she spoke today at the Finance Committee, and I think she can bring a certain level of direct experience that, you know, we can't. But I, as far as assignments, I'm happy to just do it in random order if you want to go down the...
Mr. Shell, do you have your hand up as well?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, but we can resolve this.
Yeah, I had Dean's name penciled in beside the library already.
Yeah.
And then I think I'm fine with Pat doing the 1610. Fine, excellent, good. Okay?
Yeah, I mean, random order, I mean, if I happen to get the transfer station, wonderful, but I, random order is perfectly fine with me.
Okay, Mr. Shell?
Yeah, I just, I had a couple of questions, and frankly, I just don't remember well, and I need to be educated a little bit. The ballot questions, is just a motion to put a matter on the ballot for the election that relates to things that we're going to vote on later? Is that a fair assessment of what that's about?
Yeah, so you'll have an election warrant where the ballot questions will be ordered and also have it in the warrant book. We'll have the ballot question shown and the accompanying warrant article that has to get approved prior to the ballot.
But we're going to vote on them separately.
I don't think there's a vote on the ballot question.
No, not on the town meeting.
Okay.
Excluded as part of the package.
Okay, then that, okay, that answers, that answers, good. That eliminates one question I had. And then you have the, the charter revisions are here because we didn't approve those, they weren't in the warrant last year, even though they were approved before the meeting last year?
Yes, so they have to be approved at the first annual town election following adoption by town meeting. Our election is just four days after town meeting, so it's the next year. So they were voted and approved, and they go on the ballot question for 2023. It didn't make the ballot for 2022 because we had...
That's the question. Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, I, you know, I expected this to be a lot more difficult and complicated. I sort of think this is pretty good ordering. Thank you.
Yes, Kareem?
Yes, I like the order as well. I was just going to suggest on the ballot questions that we do the expenditure ones, start with the COA, Transfer Station, Belt Press, and then do the Charter Review.
There you go.
The last one. So it'd be one, COA, two, Transfer, three, Belt, and four, Charter, in the order for the ballot.
And frankly, I'm good with Cory doing the Transfer Station. I think it's appropriate. I would also like to do the Montomoy Regional School District operating budget.
I'd like to take Stony Hill then for whatever factor.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, the only comment I would make, there were a couple where I voted no, so I don't obviously want to be the person recommending those to town meeting. If you want me to sabotage them, I'd...
You mean the Bad Penny article?
There were two, I suppose.
Sorry. Yes, there were. Okay.
Yeah, so we'll do the order like we do Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, select board members, unless you voted against it, then we'll skip.
Yeah, we'll just kind of tweak it, yeah.
Tweak it a little bit.
Perfect.
Yep. Mr. Shell?
Well, the one question I have is, what, the vote requirement is a majority for 127 Old Harbor?
I'm sorry?
Don't have it on here.
No, it's, it's Item 22.
Yeah, we voted three to two to approve. Yeah, we voted three to two to approve.
That should be two-thirds, I think.
All right, I'll verify that.
Get clarification.
I, I, I mean, I'll be perfectly happy if it isn't.
Chapter 40, Section 15.
Town Council hasn't reviewed all of the...
Chapter 40, Section 15A. That's the two-thirds that these guys are trying to change.
The Bad Penny article.
15A, okay.
Thank you for catching that.
Yeah, well, that's all right.
It would have been caught any, it would have been caught anyway.
I'm surprised that you...
Yeah, I know, shop eyes down there.
I'll, I'll, I'll take 127 unless one of you two wants it.
Did Shereen just say she wanted it? No?
No, I was just going to...
I was going to take Stony Hill.
Okay, 127, Jill.
I'll take 127, yeah. I take all the hard ones.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else? I, I thought the order was great, Jill. You did a good job.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have two committee appointments this evening, one for the Historic Business District Commission. We have one alternate vacancy to June 30th, 2023. We did interview Attorney Timothy Gilmore on January 10th. Back and forth a little bit, but he has made his desires known to be a member of the Historic Business District Commission, so a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Timothy Gilmore as an alternate member, that's only one member, of the Historic Business District Commission until June 30th, 2023, unless soon a revote or a successor is appointed.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. We have a vacancy on the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee. We did interview Bob Ryder, Robert Ryder, March 7th, 2023. Shereen Davis, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Robert Ryder to the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee until June 30th, 2025, unless soon a revote or a successor is appointed.
And I'll second that, actually. Okay. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to go back to the, the speakers, do you want to give me the two on the, the bylaw and the petition? Well, the petition article will be presented by Mr. Munson.
Yes, it will, but I was going to...
The bylaw, I'll do that.
You should do the amendment, absolutely. Yep, very good. Good.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
Good night, Chair.